So we'll open the meeting for Monday, October 16th. And maintain a motion except the agenda is may be approved. Michael has a change we need to make.
The Green Mountain Power Substation guests will not be coming tonight. And in place of that, Chief Montgomery's prepared a slideshow for
Traffic calming.
Traffic calming devices.
Cool.
Make a motion to accept the agenda with the changes.
A second.
Okay, you want to take the minutes since you guys do most of them?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of September 25th. It's our regular board meeting. Okay. The only change that I see here is that there was no way I was in this meeting at 6:30 a.m.
You might have been.
Yeah, we could have been. But not this one. So 6:30 p.m. Okay. Everything else goes to And what she had done was because the resolutions for the loans from the USDA so long, she just had the attachment of the two.
I see that on your back. Okay.
Yep.
All in favor of the minutes of September 25th? Board meeting, please say aye.
Aye. Make a motion to approve the Monday, September 25th, 2023, 3:30 meeting, which is just basically Chris and I meeting up with the different VHB and the water folks. It's our weekly meeting. Which now has been changed to 3:00 p.m. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Make a motion to approve Monday, October 2nd. Same thing here. Was that 3:30? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wednesday, October 4th. Steve, you are here. Yep, 4:30. And it was the bid opening or whatever for I was not here, so.
And we just had the one bid to open. Well, one each.
Yeah. So you guys make the motions as I was
So motion to accept the minutes for the special board meeting.
Second, and all in favor.
I was over here with other people. So that's it. For the minutes.
Are there a select board member feedback and concerns? I have one question that came up from somewhere else. The box that's under the new sign. Is that going to be electrified? And is that where we're going to post things like World Cup or something like that?
Yeah, so we approved it back
Yeah, no, I know we approved it back.
So I call the electrician and they're going to come in and electrify it on the 27th or 28th.
Okay.
All right.
Yep.
It's supposed to be able to handle either it's different font sizes, so you can go one big letter or three rows. So the 28th
Will someone be able to remotely change
It will be done by wifi. So you can do it from across the street at the KPAA.
Good.
Without getting into the snow and everything. And then handling that stuff with your hands and the freezing, I know because I've done it a couple of times. And then also the 28th, you'll start seeing the sign going up front here with the same design, like the big wood thing, and then it's a bigger screen, if I recall.
Yes, it was, yeah.
You know.
We had more lines in it.
More lines in it, so.
Square.
But so but so I would say by October 28th, the one down on the Killington Road, Route 4, will be working. And probably by the October 10th, the one down out in front here will be
November 10th.
No, I'm sorry, November 10th. Yeah, November 10th will be working.
It's because you were here 6:30 a.m.
I understand, 6:30 a.m. So.
Okay. Do you folks have something that's not on the agenda? And Mike and Noreen, is there something you wanted to bring up that's not already on the agenda? I'm not seeing anything. Mike's got his hand up.
That's his mouse.
That's his mouse.
I think it's him.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead, Mike.
I just, I just wanted to hear the Green Mountain Green Mountain power thing, but I guess I'll wait for it next time.
Their representative isn't going to be here tonight.
Yeah.
So, okay.
I apologize, that's the second time they've
Third.
Third. They postponed on me and they've asked to be on the agenda for the next meeting.
Three strikes.
Why not?
We keep on saying yes. Okay, so Green Mountain Power is out, so what are we going to, to Whit?
We're going to go to Whit with his traffic concern. Or calming.
Calming. Concern of calming.
It's a concern.
First, I just wanted, Greg Ricketts couldn't be here. He's our new officer, he's at training tonight. But he's started, he's come to us from Mountain County Sheriff's Department, he's got a few years of experience. And he's off to a good start. He made an arrest a couple nights ago for 99 miles an hour on US Route 4 on the flats. He made an arrest last night for 80 miles an hour on the Killington Road.
On the Killington Road?
Yeah, 80 in front of Merrill Drive.
99?
Yes, on the flats.
On Route 4.
On Route 4.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In which lane?
Heading
All of us.
Yeah.
What time is it morning, 80 miles an hour?
Right in front of Merrill Drive. They're right across the street, pretty much.
Nighttime?
Yeah, 8:30-ish, 8:20. Not that late.
On the Killington Road, how fast were they going?
Eighty. Eighty. Not as fast as 99.
Fast. It's off to a good start, I guess.
Yeah, it is.
Another 10 yards, he would have had to start applying his brakes to stop at the bottom of the road.
Yeah, he did it in time. I put together a quick PowerPoint, just to kind of follow up on our discussions we had started, well, a few years ago, but also more recently, you know, a couple meetings ago. So I just, again, threw this together real quick, there's no bells and whistles in it, but at least gives us some visuals on what we're looking at, talking about. So I wanted to include something on our strategic plan, I'm not going to go through a whole strategic plan on this because, but it does give us kind of the basis of where at least the police department kind of takes its leads from, and something to kind of follow. So it's kind of where I kind of look to as a guide, to make sure we're kind of on track, something I developed about 10 years ago. And it's, it's a living document, it can be changed and modified as, as our town changes. But, you know, I don't have to read through the intro or the vision statement, but again, these are the kind of the guiding light for the PD. So in the strategic plan, it's got goals, so, you know, we have four main goals. Number two, I highlighted in red, and that's kind of goes in line with what we're talking about, is to provide effective current and progressive equipment, resources and technology to ensure community safety through an effective police force. So the technology has changed a lot over the years with these traffic signs we're going to talk about, radar signs, radar carts. And like Jim was talking about with, you know, kind of web-based, cloud-based, being able to change signs, we can start pulling stats from a lot of these signs that are out there now, and kind of do traffic surveys, traffic counts, time of day, fastest vehicle, slowest vehicle. And it does graphs and charts, and it's, it's pretty amazing. So again, the goal, so, you know, different strategies to attain our goals. Obviously, strategy one is to reduce the crime and the fear of crime. So again, I highlighted point number two, the objective, how do we get to that? Again, it's to continue implementation of the department's data-driven approaches. So what data-driven approaches are? We take all these stats we get from these different signs, and we can say, okay, well, River Road, because this time is, is month of July, between, you know, 8:00 drop-off or camp and 10 o'clock or something like that. So we can kind of focus our energy patrol times based on what the data is showing us throughout the community, based on what these radar signs are giving us.
So do they, just the data they give us, well, it gives traffic flows?
Traffic flow, time of day.
Time, in time, obviously, with the time with that. And it also would give us
Speed.
Speed too, of all those vehicles.
Highest speed, lowest speed, average speed, less individual speeds, traffic counts.
7:50, 9 to 8:50.
So we could start doing our own traffic counts instead of hiring consultants all the time on the
Yeah. So the strategy two was to ensure effective response to citizens' calls for service. So the next slide, the objective is to conduct an analysis of routine patrol areas and development of officers on a regular basis. So again, this helps us kind of range in where the most traffic's coming from, the time of day, so we can focus on those times of days, instead of having an officer sit somewhere, you know, for three hours and have two cars go by, we can focus on different parts of the community and the town where it's really needed. Strategy four, to ensure safety on Killington Roadways through effective enforcement, education, engineering. First objective, to have an ongoing interact, interaction with the town's engineer, road foreman, on traffic issues. Again, I think that kind of describes what we've been talking about the last number of years. Objective five, to continue traffic safety education efforts. You know, speed signs, that's kind of education. It's one method of education. A lot of times motorists really don't know how fast they're going, sometimes it kind of catches you off-guard. I think they're pole-mounted signs.
Or how fast the car can go.
We do have a shut-off on that. Or the radar car will actually say, oh my gosh, I'm going, you know, 50 into 35 or something, or soon to be 30. Objective six, to continue implementation of radar signs, speed carts, and signage at designated areas. So again, that was right, this was developed 10 years ago, it was right in line with what we're talking about today. Metrics, how do you get to the goals? I just kind of highlighted goal two, to provide effective current progressive equipment, resources and technology to ensure community safety through an effective police force. And again, the next one, watch guard videos and all that. So traffic calming, so this is Institute of Transportation kind of defines traffic calming, it's a long, long definition, I just took part of it. And I highlighted as a combination of measures, because as we talked about last meeting, it's a multi-pronged approach. It's not just going to be enforcement through, through police cruisers on the road, it's got to be coming from traffic calming through radar signs, radar carts, maybe curb cuts, stuff like that, you know, roundabout type stuff, that'll, traffic signs, lights. And it kind of talks about, kind of everything we've been talking about. These are just traffic studies, we don't have to go through all these, but I highlighted some of the important ones that kind of reflect what we're talking about. These are studies done throughout the country, and actually throughout, you know, even outside of the country. But there's kind of some stats there of what the speed signs have done. In South Dakota, the percentage of speeding vehicles reduced by 20 to 25 percent. That's kind of the effectiveness that some of these radar signs are doing. In California, six miles an hour for the
They've only been doing 93.
Still a little lost. Yes, there's a lot of information out there, the effectiveness of, of these tools. So this is getting into kind of the meat and potatoes of this. This is one style of pole-mounted radar signs, there's a number of companies out there. This one, it's cool, a lot of nowadays, you can actually program stuff, but this one is different colors, a lot of times they're kind of an amber or a red. This is different colors, which is nice, because I think it helps get a driver's attention quicker. They're light, they're solar-based, so those can actually be, we can mount poles throughout the community, a regular sign type of pole, and we can actually move those as we see fit. Jim's talked about over the years how he likes, I think he was in Chester around Christmas time, and said, you know, naughty or nice.
Yep.
And these, these are the company that does that. And it's, it's pretty cool. There's, the reason why I had to talk about this tonight, they're having a special, it expires end of the month, we can go for pricing later, but you can get three of those for a little over $9,000. So again, we can talk about that at the end of the presentation. Couple different styles, you have the white style on the left-hand side, similar to what we have now, another company. Radar carts, we've seen those, we have one here that's no longer functions, but it's something we should look at, I think certainly in the future, we have two different styles. So you've seen the orange there, that's kind of what we're seeing now, and we'll talk about the messaging boards we see, but that's another company that does kind of the commercial orange style. These message boards, this is a message board now, they also can be outfitted with radar, so actually it can also do messages, but also kind of a dual purpose, you can actually get a radar head on there as well, so it'll show speed. And these are all programmable. Another programmable one, similar to what the, we see the resort rents and buys, a lot of other commercial road projects. This is a little smaller version, they have full-size versions too, which we can certainly look at, but I think with a lot of the stuff that's coming to town in the near future, they want to look at maybe getting something for the town, doesn't have to be immediately, but maybe something a little smaller than what the resort has, but something again, multi-function, they can program it for our own events, our own activities, including a radar mount, which will show speed as well.
That'd be good, because you could probably share the calls to Public Works, because they'd probably be using it some.
Another thing we talked about, safety in the crosswalk, again, something over the years, kind of been off and on conversations. This is something I pulled up, simple, pretty inexpensive, like $400 and something dollars. It's also movable, I think it's important, obviously, a lot of times communities that these stuff comes from are not so snow-based, we obviously need to move stuff in the winter months. But again, inexpensive, put it right in the middle of the road, right in the middle of the crosswalk. Again, so those things kind of distract the driver to slow, concentrate on their speed, speed humps. Different than speed bumps, speed bumps are more for slower parking lot type applications, these are speed humps. They also make speed tables, which are a little better for faster speeds. But again, it'll
What's a speed table? So you
It comes almost like, yeah, it comes up, it's almost like flat or a little longer distance, and it comes back down more gradually. The picture on the lower right, those are designed so it doesn't slow emergency vehicles down, so they're actually spaced, so large commercial trucks, fire trucks, apparatus, their tires go in between them. That's what those are designed for.
Is that something we could easily bolt to our road?
Yeah, those are removable as well. So obviously in the winter months, we wouldn't want those there. So this is kind of new, it's called Sign-A-Kid, it's from the same company that makes the first slide I had. So if you look at the picture, obviously, the one on the right-hand side, so I think it's out in England now, it's kind of a big thing, they're starting to bring it here to the United States. They don't have pricing on those yet, but it's like, again, it's something that will stand out for drivers that are going down the road.
That little kid right there?
Fake kid there on the right-hand side, big, oversized. And it'll definitely get a driver's attention. Slow down.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Put a rifle in there.
Hunting season? And there's, yeah, there they are, right there.
Wow.
Put some skis in, is that a thing?
That'd be cool. So yeah, price, that's kind of, again, a quick PowerPoint, but pricing discussions, I do have some stuff here from different companies. One of which, the Elon City one, that's the kind of the first slide that we've talked about over the years. That, they've got a deal, a little over $9,000, that expires the end of this month. The other ones, the pricing is, for the pole-mounted stuff is pretty similar, a little, right around $3,000 a sign. Some are mobile, not as mobile as the Elon City ones, the trailer, speed trailers, those pricing is pretty consistent around messaging trailers, messaging trailers around $14,000, $15,000. The big one like the resort has is around $20,000, but the smaller they are, the price comes off a little bit.
Cincella rents that out. We just had it up on East Mountain Road, $1,000 a month.
Yeah. So yeah, how many months, you know, pays for itself pretty quick.
We're going to have a lot of construction going on here for the next few years. So I, I think what we need to do is move forward, at least on getting the pole-mounted or where we can move the ones around.
Yeah.
Not necessarily the trailer ones right now, we can come back and have another discussion.
Yeah.
But I'm thinking we need two on Killington Road, at least. You already have one down here, saying where?
We have one down here, and we have
And one up there.
Right.
But more in that, you know, area of, say
We can do it by the market, Firehouse, Old Firehouse, maybe.
Yeah, there, and then
Further down a little bit.
You know, West Hill Road.
West Hill.
You know, there, but then one on West Hill.
Yep.
And then going down West Hill and whatever.
And River Road at some point by insurance.
And then River Road. You know, but if you go back to the screen that I think you were showing, that there was
Yes.
The ones like Chester had or whatever?
Yes.
You were saying those were movable around?
Mm-hmm.
I like that.
Ricky, maybe put some poles throughout different spots, and we can
Just move them.
Move, move the signs? You know, I don't even know if you just wanted to do like
Which one?
This one?
Back up on the
First one that he had up
It was before the one you showed.
Right there. Yep, that one. Yeah, that one there. This is like too fast and everything else. So like, if you got almost like an umbrella stand thing where they can, you know, you don't have to put the pole, because if you put a post in, then we're going to get our citizens, like, there is a sign down because there's nothing on top of it.
Right.
But if you kind of did like a heavy sand-based thing with the pole in it, and that thing can go on to it, so that you can move it around in different
I would be afraid someone would steal it.
Yeah.
I would still put a pole in the ground, but we could utilize
Get something else
We could put another sign on it, so it doesn't look naked
Yeah.
When it's not there, but
Put one of the speed signs on it, when you take this down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I purchased from this company once, and the product is really good. And the, you know, the one thing that they were pretty cautious about is what kind of pole you put it on, it's got to be sturdy, because if you've got that in this, in the cell, you know, the panel on there, it's, it's a lot of weight, but I was like super happy with the product.
But if I go through this quickly, I, I think you need two more on Killington Road. You need something, I mean, even if you put two on Killington Road, thinking that, two on West Hill Road, one up, one down.
Right.
And then all around River Road in summer. One up, one up?
No, I would just do one down.
Going up, going down.
But what I'm getting at is that we're going to already hit already four or five, we might as well just say six, and we're going to go around, and, you know, and then we could determine where we're going to put posts later on. And then you get somebody that's going to say Stays Road or something like that, and so as long as you have
East Mountain.
East Mountain Road. Or during like special events or whatever, you know.
You can move
You might even want to put more on River Road if you're going to have like the fourth, well, there's nobody going fast down or whatever.
Beginning of
But the beginning, Schoolhouse Road for beginning of school or something like that. So I would just say, you know, at $9,000, I would just order six of them, two sets. There's not a limit, right?
No.
It's a lot better than a trailer.
Yes.
Okay.
So that'd be 18.
Right.
Yeah. So I'm going to make a motion for the town manager to move forward of purchasing six of, what do they call it, EVOs?
Elon City.
Elon City.
Elon City. I'll second that gladly.
The only thing I would suggest is that we put the speed limit in it, because
Yes.
Because up, like up on the top of the hill, it says what you're going, but if you don't know what the speed limit is
Yep.
Or can, or can you program that in somehow?
Well, can you go back to that one?
If you go back to, but we could put the speed limit sign up in that right below.
One of them has it and one of them doesn't.
Yep. And I've noticed that too, was going to fix it, but I was going to wait till our 30 mile per hour signs show up.
I was trying to go 30 going downhill.
I thought we had it.
Huh?
No, we have to
We've got them, we got to wait 60 days.
Oh, yeah, 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 but okay. I thought you were waiting on that.
It says three rows of tri-color LEDs, 3M diamond grade reflective sheeting, customizable meshes of spike. I mean, I guess the question is, is can you put in, you know, your speed and, you know, speed limit or whatever?
Yeah, you can. And you can even program it to where people don't want to race, to track a high speed, so you can set it at like, don't, don't track anything over 45, because people want to see it at 85.
Certain competitions.
Yeah.
I love, I'm telling you, for, for years, I'd come in here after picking my daughters up at North Hampton, like, I get into, you're doing 40 miles an hour, because it's 40, 45 or whatever, and you're going into Chester and it's coming down to 30.
And then it goes
And then all of a sudden, it's, it used to say like naughty as you were pulling up to it around Christmas time, and then, and all of a sudden, it brings you down, you come down, you get into that 30 miles an hour, and it says nice in green. You know, gets me going slower.
Yeah.
You know, yeah, and then you go to 20, but it's the same thing. And then the state wouldn't allow them after a bunch of years, because it's a state road, but you can do it on the town roads. So, but, you know.
No, I agree, I think it's necessary.
So I, I think you go ahead, well, we made the motion.
All in favor of Jim's motion to buy six from Elon City? Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And that gets you going, and I think we really need to do like, come in here on another meeting and get us ahead of time, the stuff about the other signs or whatever. I do think we need something on a trailer, Chris, but more of like the, the messaging board, because that's where we're going to be
I think what we should do is, now that the thoughts are in our head, in our travel around town, and the things that are going to be happening, we all keep it in mind and think about different uses. I think there's going to be some, obviously, sometimes.
And then when you, when you place this order with them?
Yeah.
Do they do this like every year or so, or something like that, like these sales?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw a marketing piece I had from them, probably about a year ago, and it said the same deal. And this is when they told me
As I said, I think, I think six to get us going, and then maybe next year, we can say, hey, oh wow, we missed this area, we missed that area, whatever.
See what we need from there.
Yeah.
Schoolhouse Road, definitely.
Yeah.
Exactly.
A little more drop-offs.
I could use a few. I think, and we should think about those speed bumps, you know.
Yeah.
A lot of people, you know, have moved to town, and have said to me, so all these sidewalks you're going to build, are you going to put one on our street too? And I'm like, no. But kids, you know, we're bringing families to town, kids on bikes, everything else, something we might want to think about, just calming measures like that, like
Simple.
Simple stuff.
But we're heading into, I, I want those speed bumps, I think we should have that discussion next month.
It would be
So we can have them in for, or, you know So we can have them in for, or, you know.
Spring.
For the springtime. I definitely think we need some on, um, River Road.
Yep.
Hold up to speed bumps in the fall.
No, no, that's why I'm saying just the summertime.
Bolt them down in the summer, then pull them off.
So that, that, these are removable. And then, and then for Schoolhouse Road for the start of the, you know. So, but we'll get into that, right now, we've got six signs. How long is the delivery time?
To start. Not that bad. Couple of years ago, I think would've been bad, but they're.
Naughty and nice for the Christmas time.
That's right.
We're having them by then, for sure.
Naughty and nice, red and green.
Don't go too fast, guy, we're not used to that.
I like the ones with the woodstocked, it makes like.
Yeah, the woodstuck.
All the woodstock ones.
Think you're getting pulled over.
With all the flashing at you.
I hate to live, I'd hate to live in front of it though.
Yeah, across the street. Across the street.
Company, uh, ADA sales, OANCO, that's, that's theirs there. They, they have all these half, we can flash blue or red lights as well.
The select board probably be fighting for who gets the slowest speed, right?
Yes.
You're out there, copper, you see us. There's some of the slowest drivers out there.
Yeah, no, it gets annoying behind you.
Tell me when I'm in the town car, slow down, slow down, slow down.
Moving billboard.
Great, thank you, Whit.
Thank you, guys.
That was a good presentation.
Yeah. I'll get with you, I'll get with you this week.
Yeah.
Yep, between you two now.
That's right here.
It's all part of it.
Okay. Uh, are we making this official, is that what Collector of Taxes is doing?
We are, and I've gotta, uh, so just make a motion for me to become the Collector of Taxes, and then we've got the document to pass around, so.
Make a motion to appoint the town manager as the, uh, collec- Collector of Taxes.
I second that.
And we've already discussed this, so all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I need a pen, can I sit, pen, thanks.
I don't see Lucretia, I'm guessing we might not have liquor control?
No liquor control, aye.
Okay.
Yeah, we're go- we're flying.
Municipal planning grant, this came from the Planning Commission?
Yes. Um, correction to the agenda here, uh, I don't think it was worth a change, but. The, it's not, this municipal grant's not for the Village Center designation, although I have signed an agreement for the Village Center Designation Study. That money's, is, is coming from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission out of one of their, uh, reserve funds. Uh, this municipal planning grant application is to redo our recreational master plan. And what the Planning Commission is, uh, seeking here tonight is just a resolution to, to approve that, um, application so that I can send it in.
I make a motion for the Select Board to sign the FY twenty-four municipal resolution for municipal planning grant. For their recreation department. Um, and the funds are coming out of that, um, fund that we set up for the Planning Commission.
And a lot of times these are, I, I'm not sure if this is the case, but a lot of the, uh, Rutland Regional Plan Grants are matched within kind. I don't know if that's, this catch, in this case or not, but we always, we take advantage of it when we can.
On the favor of the motion to accept or to apply for the municipal planning grant, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Do we have a contract from AJGA?
We do not have a contract from AJGA, um, the only thing. The only thing that I meant to bring here tonight, and I, I guess depending on, on what the board's decision is moving forward. I just wanna update everyone here, I went to the KPAA meeting and discussed the pros and cons of, um, the KPAA event. And, uh, yeah, I'm speaking for them here, but really they're.
Is this under these contracts anyway? Really a contract? It's moving forward with AJGA.
Yeah.
Contract.
Let me just say that for executive session.
Okay, sure.
You're gonna be bringing in with some other organization, and I'd rather hear it firsthand since it's contract in the executive session?
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay, deal.
And we do the Casella contract with it?
Casella contract for, for transfer station, I'd rather just hear it and then we come out. So, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Vision contract, we've already gone through this, so this is just really a, this is not, this is an update.
Vision contract, well, I set an ambitious goal for us to have a vision contract in front of, in front of us tonight, but I'm, I'm waiting for, uh, a deliverable from the listers. I'm thinking I'll be done. We had to do some horse trading back and forth on the hours we got for, uh, BCA support, so, um. I'm thinking Monday I'll have a, and a contract for you guys to review.
So just to bring you up to date, the listers have it in front of us on this, and the biggest concern is when they're doing this reappraisal. You know, um, they had said that the resort was gonna be underneath one side, and we asked for both.
And they don't wanna do it?
No, I'm just bringing him up to big.
Oh, okay, okay.
So while he's talking with them.
Yeah.
To, like, he wasn't here when we talked about it.
We wanted to have both approaches done, their evaluation versus going.
Cause really, like, it's, it's, it's how they're gonna do, my commercial property is on basic numbers. And then there's a, um, a, um, income-based approach. The income-based approach is really coming from the business. So, I wanna make sure we're treating them the same as all the other businesses.
And that's kinda the holdup, we just, I've gotta work with the listers, because the resort is not on this vision contract, they're, they're gonna, you, you all probably know this unless saying it.
But that's the other thing too, it's like I've been talking to boots, like when they say the resort, are they looking at Great Gulf as the resort or not?
And that's the holdup, and that's the holdup to this contract, I've just gotta double check their parcels to make sure that they didn't mix them up.
And Great Gulf is not going to be, um, income-based, cause they have no income base until they start selling things, it's based on land value.
Which is why we were planning on just throwing them onto this vision contract, Great Gulf.
I think that's how S P land was, was always based on, you know, land value, not, not, um, income. So that's good. Right into manager's report.
Yeah, I, I, a lot of stuff on here is pretty important, so I'm actually gonna, um, belabor over this whole thing. Uh, Killington Fo- and again, this is always available online, as you can see, it just kinda gives an overview of what's been going on the last couple of weeks. Killington Forward Initiative, we've signed the bond resolutions for the USDA grant, so that was kinda the final step there for that eight, to, to attain that eighteen thousand three ninety-four for the, for Road Project One A. Amendmented Act two fifty permit for the wellhouse entrance is still under review by the state. A lot of back and forth here, and, and Select Board Member Half is definitely kinda taking the lead on this, and it's, it's, it's part of my learning curve to kinda, um, understand the nuances of these projects. So, uh, if you wanna say anything to that, Jim, you can, or no? That, that, that looks accurate, right? Okay, we will. Uh, the ribbon cutting was a huge success, a special thanks go to KPA and also Select Board Member Half for putting together the event. I was, I was against the saw, but it was a huge hit, so.
You're against cutting a tree down.
Yeah.
Bucking a log?
Bucking a log's different. Um, uh, the town is currently helping the Chamber Economic, Economic Development for the Rutland Region to draft an agreement for the Calis Grant of over two million for the road and water projects. I think I also got elected onto the Cedar Board today, so you have a representative from the town on there. The OTV form, we talked about this at the last meeting, it just locks all the tax values in place. We're, we, the ball's in VEPSE's court, we actually have a meeting coming up, VEPSE, we've got quite a few things we need to speak with them about, including what triggers, um, what triggers debt. Yeah, so, anyway.
So OTV is original taxable value?
Yes.
And that's where we're locking in the TIF district for that original, so. Listers gave everything, and so now all of a sudden they are approving that.
Yep. Uh, we had a pre-construction meeting for the Road Project One B, which is here at the bottom of the access road, and, um, tree cutting should begin in the coming weeks for that project. Uh, just on one side of the road for now. And we're still trying to get a few easements, but we, we see the light at the end of the tunnel there for those. Uh, and then, just a reminder, this has been on my, uh, my reports here the last few meetings, but tree cutting for Phase One Water is scheduled to begin in October. It has begun, and construction at the base of Killington Road to Anthony Way will begin in spring, okay? So just to clear up what I said, tree cutting is happening between Anthony Road and Anthony Way and Route Four, but no digging or anything like that. Okay, moving on, Town Hall, uh, we're just kinda going back and forth, I'm, I'm gonna breeze over this, but we're going back and forth with, with the architect to make sure that we've got a good plan for the upstairs. Uh, we're, we're still hoping for a, um, a move-in this summer. Uh, one hiccup is that I did find out there was a contract that was signed, uh, prior to my employment, and obligated us to pay internet services. But the building's vacant, so I'm kinda in a battle with, uh, with that service provider to nullify until we're in.
So just to follow up on phone service, I've been asking long before you got here for a real study of what does the service that we have now compared to what the TEL would really be still charging us?
Okay. May still be.
They may still be charging us too, cause that was, that's not a joke.
Uh, yeah.
It's not, it was, we found out that we were getting double bill for one service.
That was a shock smile, when I did there. More.
Yeah.
Okay. I think it's really warrants, um, deep dive into it. Okay. We can get on it, I've got some things off my plate now, so I, I think I might be able to throw that there. We've got support too. Kinda going on to my next thing, we have new staff members, speaking of more support. So we've got, uh, um, a planner, we've got a finance director, and we've got a new police officer, as Whit was saying. And then we've also got one intern from UVM that's helping us on a few of our planning grants, like the Municipal Energy Resilience Planning Grant and all that.
Before you move on to that, like, you know, it gets out there and we aren't peg TV.
Yeah.
We budgeted for a planner for the last two years, we haven't had one.
Yeah.
So we fill the position of the planner that's in our budget. Finance Director, okay, we've had that in our budget, okay? So we have that. And the police officer, Whit, you had worked into the budget. So we're filling positions, we're not just hiring on people, that's.
Yeah, right.
Well, no, people start, you start looking at, go, what do you mean, I hired another planner?
It's important.
This is one planner, okay?
Well, and it was an excellent choice, cause she's been doing all the work.
Well, she was the sub, so Lisa Davis was the sub person doing stuff, and she's taken on the planner, so. We've dropped one position, sub, and then we have it, and she's doing a great job.
Doing an incredible job.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we've been doing our monthly department head meetings, it, this, you know, we just kinda talk about what's happening this month. I guess one of the bigger things that came up is the town's looking to start using our special event permits again. Uh, Whit, for grid one, two main, if it's not there already, we'll put it on the website, and, um, it, it gives a pretty clear description of what triggers.
Yeah.
The need. The Killington welcome sign at the base of the access road and the public safety building sign are scheduled for completion by the end of October, early November.
We need to talk about that in Select Board member concerns.
Yeah. Yeah, we've been, we're kicking butt full throttle on getting those in the ground today, and Ricky's gonna be here. We got a dig ticket in, Ricky's gonna be here at the end of the week, he's gonna start, um, putting an electrical line there, uh, we've got a plan to put in footers. Yeah.
Just to be clear.
Yeah.
We're putting in the conduit for the electrical line.
Yeah.
We're not doing the electrical work, we're hiring in a license, a licensed electrician. Just in case, is anybody call, listening in from Division of Fire Safety, we're not putting an electrical line. That's what, that's what Robbie Stubbs was like, he was like, hey, listen, just make sure that.
Yeah, he said.
You start putting conduit in, they're gonna come.
Alright, so we talked about the vision revaluation contract, uh, this is just important to note, cause I have, I went to the Rotary Club meeting, and there were people that were surprised that the, the thirty mile per hour signs weren't up yet. I briefly mentioned this at the last meeting, that whenever you do ordinance change, you've gotta do a sixty day warning before it actually comes into effect. So, um, those notices were put out, it was short timing, so I, I put the notice out in the Rutland Herald, and then it's posted five places around town. Uh, Finance Director is working on financial forecasting for the transfer station, uh, we can talk more about that after we look at the contract. Gosh, I'm gonna, I'm really kinda going on. The town submitted a letter of support for Mission Farm to further develop the amphitheater through grant funding, that's a really cool setup they've got down there, I went to the, their event, um, a couple of months ago, okay? The Planning Commission's working on cannabis regulations, just in, you know, just for the, so that we can have it in place for the vote in March. Uh, we talked about Village Center designation. Uh, the town is onboarding two new full-time firefighters, they should start by the end of this month, this will greatly reduce response time and make coordination between departments and stakeholders more efficient. And we can talk to them about the KPAA and their decision towards the contract later, and then FEMA, I just kept that short. Work is gonna, work has begun on East Mountain Road, and, uh, there will be closures throughout October and November. That concludes my report.
Nice report.
Thank you.
So I know that, um, Craig Moser is talking to the Mountain Times, he put in the newspaper last week what, wrote what section of the world is now going to close. In the timeline, and he's contacting her again this week to give an update of the progress.
Maybe Whit, if you can get word of that, and on social media with it, you know, coming from the town would be great too.
Should I get that timeline from Craig?
Um, you know, let's just, get it from Polly, just ask her for what she writes up, so that way she can get it. So she should have it by the end of the day, end of the Tuesday each week, for the next three weeks.
Yeah, just follow that.
Just follow that and put it up on the police.
Yeah.
Facebook page, whatever page.
And Chief Genter's working on a press release too for the firefighters, so more information to come on that.
Great.
Any other citizens in?
I know it's not a town, I know it's not a town project, I was just wondering what the status of the, the one by Spring Hill. That was supposed to be done by October.
Yeah, my, my buddy, Richard Croft, emails me.
He did.
Every week or whatever, and I believe he said that they're out of here within two weeks.
Rich Craft told you that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
They've got a little, they, they told me they were gonna vacate my parking lot by the thirty-first. They've got, uh, I think with the weather, they had some serious delays.
Looks like it's winding down.
Yep.
Yeah, it looks like a bunch of resurfacing work, kind of.
So since we're talking about that, that has nothing to do with Killington Forward.
Right.
That has nothing.
And they know it's not the town.
No, no, it has, it has nothing to do with the wastewater system for Killington Road. Other than. They've been scheduling this culvert to be changed out for some five or six years. And by changing it up to this big cement box culvert.
It's amazing.
They made the fire district that you're the chair of pay to move the waste line. If they didn't have to remove that, you would've never done anything, correct?
Correct, they moved it too.
They moved it. So, it has nothing to do with the water line, has nothing to do with the town.
Three million dollar culvert.
Any other business?
Something, uh, not for me.
Michael, any other business? None for me. I'm gonna make a motion at seven fourteen that we go into executive sessions for contracts. You know, we can go inside the other room if you want to, Michael, and if your folks wanna, you know. It's probably gonna be quick, right?
It should be quick.
Yeah. I mean, we're prob- we'll be about ten minutes there, peg TV, cause we're gonna make a, we're gonna come out and make a decision, right?
I believe so.
Yeah, so, alright? So let's, let us go inside for ten minutes and then come back out.
Talking about that.
So we're out of executive session at seven twenty-nine, can you hit, Rick?
I left it, I think I left it on record, I just muted it.
So we know what they all did, all said.
Yeah.
We're watching.
Out of executive session at seven twenty-nine. No action was taken in executive session, we discussed AJGA to decide to move that off because we still need more information from AJGA. Then we went on to the Casella contract, which was ten years.
Five years.
The last one was ten years, that just ended, okay? And obviously, since ten years, there is a price increase, it's a shocker, whatever, it's about fifteen percent higher. We have garbage disposal here, we need it in town. Uh, we understand that we lose around eight to ten thousand dollars a year in garbage transfer, but that's when we don't take into account that the town is actually throwing stuff out there, and the highway department's needed for, for garbage removal of certain things. And, um, so we, I'll make a motion that we allow the town manager to sign the new contract for five years with, um, Casella for the, um, garbage removal.
Second.
We've already discussed it, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, um, the other thing that, Michael, you did mention in executive session underneath personnel was is that Chet Hagenberg has decided to retire, and he put in his resignation. And, um, I wish him.
Yeah, wish him well.
You know.
Wish him well in retirement.
Wish I was in retirement. So, um, he, he, you know, he's. We gave him the job as Public Works and he's decided that he would rather just, you know, retire at this time.
And we'll have a.
He's a grandpa, things make people change.
And I've already put a, a job description together, we'll have it posted.
Cause we really need that position filled, because this board understands that a town manager cannot handle all the town manager stuff and the TIF.
Yeah.
And FEMA. We need a Public Works person.
Yeah, I think, I think if you excluded TIF, I could manage it, but there's a lot of moving pieces there.
So we're gonna put the job description out tomorrow.
Yeah, it's gonna start moving faster next year.
Oh, yeah, and we gotta put O and M manuals together, we're gonna have a water operator, it's, yeah.
That's why I said I think you should stay around, so, okay? So, um, at seven thirty-one, uh, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Aye.
And, uh, next meeting, we are meeting next Monday?
Next Monday, this was just the, right, this was a filler in.
Just for anybody that's tuned in.